Okay, I'm going to begin, everybody. I think you've got a lot to get through. So I'm going to read the statement that Christina usually reads, which is pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general laws, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Hubbardston Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found at www.hubbardstonma.us. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will postpone on the town's website. I'm sorry, we will post on the town's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of the proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. So that notice having been read, I need to also announce that planning board meetings are broadcast and digitally recorded. Now, do you say broadcast live? I guess that's correct, right? It's an old note. Okay, so I want to call the meeting to order. We're very fortunate tonight. We have our entire board here. I'm Alice Livedall, Bill Holman, John Demalia, Francois Steiger, and our new associate member Erica Dack. And I also want to tell the public we have an opening on our board, and we would love to see. We would love to fill it. See who have any interest. You don't need expertise. You just need to be, you know, a faithful member of the board, and we would love to have you apply. Okay, so we do have. I don't know whether we have public comments or not. I suspect we do. But our policy on that is that if you are here to comment on a specific, our specific public hearing, which is coming up, we'll take your comments then at that warrant article. And other than that, if there's anybody that wants to, from the public, that wants to say something to the board, you're welcome to do so. We may not answer you right away, but we're always interested in what the public has to say. So is there anyone? Anyone that's not here on the, on a different matter? Not on an agenda item?
If you could type into chat. Otherwise, I will assume that you're all here for the public hearing.
Okay, all right. So the first item on our agenda are two sets of minute approvals. One from April 1, 2020, which we'll take up first. We need a motion to approve them from somebody out there, and you need to state your name.
I, Bill Holman, make a motion to approve.
Okay, this is April 1st minutes.
Is this for the April 1st minutes, correct, Bill?
Yes.
Okay, this is Francois Steiger. I am seconding the motion. I would like to second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the meeting. Are there comments on the meeting minutes? Changes, corrections, additions? Hearing none. I'll take a vote on approving the minutes. Livedall, I.
Bill Holman's eye.
Francois Steiger, I.
John Demalia, I.
Okay. We'll do the same, same procedures. A motion to, kind of a motion to approve October 1, 2020 minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the October 20 minutes as presented.
Oh, October.
Bill Holman's.
Apologize, I think that is incorrect. This is not October 20th meeting.
October, I'm sorry, October 1, 2020 minutes.
Yeah, I'll amend that to October 1. I was trying to go to the other screen here to look at the, to look at as they were saying. I apologize. It is October 1 on the agenda.
Right, this, this is Francois Steiger. I am seconding that motion.
Okay. Anybody changes their corrections? There is a small typo on the first line of the second page. It shut off power in that event, not even of an emergency.
I'll correct that, thank you.
Other than that, I don't have any other. Anyone else? Hearing none, should we proceed to approve them? Livedall, I.
Steiger, I with the amendments incorporated into the minutes.
Bill Holman's eye.
John Demalia, I.
Great, thanks, everyone. Okay, first action item is an A and R, which we have looked at before. And is anybody here for this? I know we got an answer by mail, so maybe there isn't. Christina, do you know?
I don't see anyone here, ma'am, that is here for that particular one, no.
Okay, so this, this is the plan put forth by Dawn and Francis Notice on Oldminster Road. And if you may recall, it's a, it's a plan that shows two lots, which are actually shown on a previous plan, so they're not creating those lots with this plan. What they're doing is they're carving out a little parcel identified as parcel S. It's actually .07 acres, 300, 3,000 square feet, and they're subtracting it from lot C and adding it to lot D. And we had gone through the checklist, I believe, although we can go through it again. But we didn't approve it because we wanted to know why they were doing this. And they did, did provide an answer to us, which it, which was, this is from Julian Votuba. V O T R U B A. Votuba, probably. And it was a very simple answer. It says the cutout is for the septic system and gradient, and grading. Signed, Julian, who I believe is the surveyor. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So do you, I honestly don't remember whether we went through the checklist in public on the record or whether anybody wants to go through it. I have gone through it. Maybe you all have too.
I believe, Alice, I believe we did that at our last meeting, didn't we?
I believe we did, but.
It takes a few minutes just to go through this here. And since this is now complete, I would suggest that we go through this.
Okay, well, we would go through it quickly. I have gone through it. So it's also sort of tells the public what we're looking for, which is, so there's a list of 12 criteria there for an A and R plan set forth in 4.02 of our subdivision regulations. And they require property boundaries be shown, which are north point, date, and scale. And then the second criteria is owner of record, surveyor, registry of deed reference. Three is the area of each lot. Four is sufficient data to determine the location, direction, and length of every street and wayline, lotline, and boundaryline, monuments, or references necessary to establish these lines on the ground, which is a whole flock of markers, but they do appear to all be there. Where practical boundary lines have contiguous in adjacent land and names of owners thereof. Six is all permanent monuments. Seven is location, name, and present widths of non-public, private ways of budding property, of which there are none on this one. Suitable space to record endorsement of our planning board, that approval is not required. The zoning classification, which is on this, it's residential agriculture. And any district boundaries that may lie within the locus of the plans, all in residential agriculture. 10, in the case of the creation of a new lot, the remaining land area and frontage, land area and frontage of the land in the ownership of the applicant shall be shown. Again, this is an interesting plan because it just swaps one little piece of land from one lot to the other, and they're both in the same ownership. So I think that is satisfied. Location of existing buildings and setbacks and so forth, but there are no existing buildings on this plan. Location and area of wetlands and lots being created by the plan, including lot being created by the remaining land. But in lieu of that, of delineating the wetlands, the applicant can provide a written certification, which they have opted to do on this plan. The certification is that the remaining parcel of land contains a minimum required upland area under the zoning bylaws, which is shown on both lots A and B, after you subtracted S from 1 and added it from C and added it to D. So I think we're set to sign it. Unless anybody has further questions.
I'm all set, Alice.
Okay, if there are none, we don't vote to approve it because it's not like a subdivision plan. It's an A and R plan. But we do need to agree on when we can, can get there to sign it. I've let, we have two plans. Assuming we approve the other one, too, we could sign them possibly together. Is, can everybody, if Christina arranges a time, work with her to get these signed this week?
I did tell the applicant we would hopefully have them to them by Monday. So if I can arrange any time between now and Monday for signatures, that would be, I told them I'd try. I'm not, I didn't promise anything.
We've tend to do this at the town, town hall parking lot. I'm available anytime. So Christina, you want to try to line it up? Or you want to try to do it today? Is there one time that everybody's available tomorrow?
I can set up times via email after the meeting.
Okay, look for your email, guys, and try to help these people out and get it signed.
Available tomorrow, so.
Okay, all right. Well, Christina, add me to anybody, but just let me know. All right, we need to move on. Our second item on the list is an A and R, a second A and R plan. This has just come in. It's a very interesting plan. It's, the owner is Daniel McHugh. It's on, I have it listed on Lombard Road, map 12, parcel 5. It's a huge lot. It's 60 acres, and they're dividing it into four lots. What makes it interesting, I mean, aside from all of the things that are usually interesting about A and R plans, is that this, these lots are overlaid over an old subdivision plan from 1961 that was approved but never built. So I did, I asked, I was, I was concerned a little bit about, does that create any problems for the town? Can we just do this? And I did hear from, I did ask Bill Murray, and he said it is not a problem for us to do that. The problem would only be, the, the only issues would be if the people that bought the new lots, bought these lots once they're divided, or well, or once our plan is approved, could, could, you know, possibly have some rights to traverse over them in the old roads. But not our problem, he says. So we can approve the plan.
Sign the plan, ma'am.
Sign the plan, right, we can, right. And you know, you can't say not approve the plan, but it's a, you know, an A and R plan. We can sign the A and R plan without creating problems left over from the fact that it's being re-subdivided. So again, it's lot C, D, E, and F. They range from 18.92 acres to 20 acres. So it's 60 acres roughly divided into four lots, all with frontage on Lombard Road. And they do have the requisite frontage. If you've looked at the, the plan, 258 feet, you have to look at them because they, they bend around the stone wall. 325 feet for lot C, 201.89 feet for lot D, 200.3 feet for lot E, and lot F. This is the story with lot F. This is an issue. Oh, 200, I see, I see it now. 231.03 feet.
Ma'am, I have a chat in the chat room from, from Mr. Bill Murray, who says he recommended that a note be added to the plan prior to a signature.
Bill came in, good. He wasn't here earlier. Yeah, he did, he did recommend, but Bill, I'll let you speak to that. But Christina already has this, and if it's not, you know, the Mylar of it, and if it's not absolutely necessary, I'd probably like to sign it without it. What do you think? You want to explain to them, to the board, what you explained to me? Can we unmute him for a minute and let him have a say?
Hello.
Bill, hi, I was, you weren't here originally, or I would have sent this to you earlier. I told them that, I told them that I called you because I was concerned about overlaying a new plan over an old subdivision. You say it wouldn't necessarily create problems for the town. It wouldn't create problems for the town at all, but it wouldn't eliminate totally the rights of people to cross or argue that they have the right to cross the old ways. So then I saw, so that was like really what I was looking for. And then I did see that you sent a recommended note, but we don't actually have the participant here tonight. And I didn't have a chance to get that note to them. So if you don't think it's absolutely necessary because it would require amending a Mylar that's already in Christina's possession, we could get away without it.
Well, let me explain what it really is. So there are at least two houses on Pickford Road that were part of the subdivision. They gave frontage off of Pickford and Paper Streets. They, being part, being lots part of the subdivision, they have rights to all the paper streets that are shown on that plan. And it's not that I'm really worried about them, but I'm worried about the people buying the new lots off of Lombard. The note that I'm recommending you add warns any potential buyer that if they put their house in the middle of the street, legally, that, that could be a title impairment. It could be a very big problem. And it might end up coming back to the town, but really, it's between the seller and the buyer. Without that, you'd have to have a, a closing attorney that understands that there is a record subdivision because those paper streets don't go away unless the planning board rescinds the subdivision.
Well, the title down there would still pick up the, the problem with me? Or would this eliminate that?
Not assuredly.
So I don't think, I don't know whether everybody got your note. Can you explain what you're, what you would advise them to us to put on it or have them put on it?
Sure, let me find it. Here we go. The note that I recommend says by endorsement here on, the Hubbardston Planning Board makes no determination as to the status of and rights relating to the roads and ways as depicted on the reference subdivision plan dated 1961 entitled Countryside Acres as recorded in the Wester County Registry of Deeds, Plan Book 253, page 29. So this makes, takes the burden off your back that you've advised people that there are ways shown on the plan, and they're part of a subdivision. And if somebody builds a house in the middle of one of those ways or obstructs the way, they may have violated somebody's rights. Is it, is it far removed, probably? But by adding that note, you've really protected future buyers, and you've protected the planning board from somebody coming back and saying that something wasn't done squarely.
So you think it's really worth doing? Do, making them go back? Okay, Christina, do we have anybody here? An applicant here?
No, ma'am, but they were given the hyperlink for this evening. I could send them an email to see if they could pop on before the end of this meeting.
Well, since, since Bill is here for our next hearing, why don't you do that? Because he could explain. I'm really in.
The problem is, ma'am, is once we're in public hearing, I'm not sure we can come back to this matter.
That's true, okay. Can we come back to it at the end?
Yeah.
No, ma'am, we have it on our agenda that we will be adjourning from public hearing.
All right, well, let me poll the board here. Having heard what Bill has to say, do you want to hold off on, on, I don't, again, the word approving, I'm always blocked with that, on signing this plan until that amended language is added to the plan?
Bill Holman's, I agree with what Bill's saying. I think it's the most prudent thing to do to protect everybody involved, not, not to create more problems as in the town, where we're already trying to close up problems we have with roads in town where they sold homes where they, they weren't town-approved roads. I think all of this kind of comes together. It's a better way to do it.
Okay, anyone else? Should we, have we lost Francois?
No, Francois was muted, my apologies.
No, that's okay.
And I just had to get back. I was looking at the plan. I do have, I do have a question for Mr. Murray. I'm still a bit confused. These, these are paper roads, and was there, when these paper roads were created, was there a time limit per chance set on the viability of this, on these paper roads? Or is it an undetermined amount of time? Or can you, can you expound on that at all?
Sure, sure I can. They built and sold lots within the subdivision. And by doing that, they initiated the construction of the subdivision. So everybody within that subdivision that owns land, theoretically has, and I'm not a lawyer, has rights to all of the roads shown. So even though they're paper streets, those people still have the right to pass and repass, extend utilities, and do all other things that roads are commonly used for, potentially. By, I'm not saying that this note will make that go away. It doesn't make that go away. But it advises in explicit terms that anybody that buys these lots, there's a subdivision road there, and you, the planning board, have not acted to make that subdivision go away. The only way you can make the, there are two ways you can make a subdivision go away. If they don't initiate any construction of any kind, within seven years, the subdivision is provoked as long as they didn't sell land off. So if a subdivision included an A and R, and they sold land off, they, they blocked it in. The other way is through the rescission process, which is approval backwards. You have to notify all parties concerned, and the people that own those lots would have to be part of that process. And if they have mortgage holders, mortgage holders have to assent to it as well. So it's an awkward process, and I can see why the applicant wouldn't do it.
Bill, can you explain the first option? You just said the seven years again, I didn't.
A subdivision approval is, expires after seven years if no initiation of construction or the sale of many lots has occurred.
Okay, so now these two lots have been sold on the old from 61 plan.
Right.
Okay, but if this, okay, go ahead.
Well, it's all, it's all the same subdivision. It's all, it's on the, all the same plan.
So since. Our new A and R plan would, would eventually terminate those rights? Or no?
No.
Okay, nothing we can do, really? Nothing we can do except put a note on the plan.
Yeah, or rescind the subdivision.
If they come before us, but they would have to initiate that.
They would have to petition you.
All right, what do you want to do, folks? Because do you want to?
This is.
I know, I know Bill's view, go ahead, Francois.
Thank you. In my opinion, at this point in time, they're really, I mean, my question to you, Madam Chair, is this, what is the reason to inquire, put an inquiry to the petitioner? If anything at all, this is really more a matter for the board to take on, per the recommendation from Bill Murray and Places and Associates, which I think is very reasonable for us as a board to take. And I think this is really a position that we have to take. I don't think there is necessarily an input that we need from the petitioner. That's just my, my personal view on this here. But if there is anything that you think that the petitioner should provide as an input, I'd like to hear that from you.
I think the information, Madam Chair, the only thing we would need to do is if we add anything to their particular A and R, we do need to get permission from them because it is a signed document, not just by the applicant, but also by the engineer. If the board were to agree to sign it, and I had in writing from the applicant that they were fine with the notation we were going to put onto it, we could move ahead with the signatures. But in lieu of that, I mean, I could get that via email, ma'am. I just need to make sure that everyone agrees to the verbiage that we have decided on.
And so understanding then that if they decided that that was not agreeable to them, we would therefore not assign the, the A and R, correct?
Yeah, or we could just add, the, you know, it's just the logistics more than anything else. We could have the engineer, we could, we could write a letter. We won't approve the plan without this added note because we want to protect the town. Can you get the Mylar, add it, and then we'll take it up again at our next meeting? I mean, that's the other way to do it. It's just not sign it till they add it. But if, if, I agree, if Christina's got a better way to do it, you know, I hate pushing people always down the road two weeks, but maybe that's the better part of wisdom here, you know?
It may be more professional-looking, ma'am, to have them printed on the Mylar.
I think that makes sense now that I hear your, your positions, and I think that makes a lot of sense, yes. So I think from that perspective, I would, I would therefore, yes, suggest that the, the Mylar be amended and then represent, re-present it back to the boards with the, with the change. At that point in time, we can take, we have a meeting coming up in early November anyway, correct?
Yeah, November 5. Okay. I don't know that we need to take a vote on that if there's agreement on that, do we?
I'll just send the notice out to the, I'll send the notice out to the applicant.
And Bill put in his email the words exactly needed, so. All right, and then put it on the agenda for the 5, assuming they're gonna want to do that for us. Okay. All right, so entering into, so we won't sign that, but we do want to sign the other one tomorrow if people can get down there and Christina can figure it out for us. And Christine, if, if I know you're, you have things going on tomorrow, I could pick it up at your house and meet people, too, perhaps. So let me know if I can help in any way on that. All right, so now we want to move to our, those are the first two action items. Now we come to our public hearing, which is my understanding, we need to, let me just get my notes. We need a motion to enter into a public hearing on C and J Realty Trust Site Plan Application and Environmental and Community Impact Analysis. And then a second, and then we'll move into the motion, move into the hearing.
Now, this is Bill Holman's, I'll make that motion. I'm trying to look for it in our agenda here, but I don't see it. So I asked you to re, to re-say that, and I'll agree to that, please.
Well, what I had said was to enter public hearing on C and J Realty Trust's Site Plan Application and Environmental and Community Impact Analysis. So moved by Bill Murray.
That's my motion.
Okay, is there a second?
This is John Demalia, I will second that motion.
Okay, great. So we'll open up that public hearing. Just by way of introduction, I know we do have members out there.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, point of order, we didn't have a vote. We had a second.
That's true, I'm sorry. I'm glad you're there. Okay, Livedall, I.
Steiger, I.
Bill Holman's eye.
John Demalia, I.
And I believe Erica can participate in this, can she not?
Not to vote to get into the meeting, ma'am. Once we're in the hearing, she can vote on the site plan.
Excellent, okay, thank you. So now, the motion passes, and we'll move into the meeting. This is a complex matter, so I'm going to try to just very quickly give an introduction, which is, as follows. This matter involves the proposed construction of a storage locker facility on a 6.2 acre lot on Gardner Road, which is in a commercial district. on a 6.2 acre lot on Gardner Road, which is in a commercial district. The, it's my understanding that the zoning enforcement officer has determined that it isn't allowed use and it would appear to be an allowed use, specifically allowed under our zoning bylaws. So before us tonight is the site plan review and the environmental and community impact analysis. So what I'd like to, to do as we proceed would be first hear from the applicant, who I believe is here, Mr. Curtis, right? And his engineer, Jason Dubois. Then we'll hear from Mr. Murray and I know there's been a lot of consultation back and forth between those two groups. And then I'd like to hear from our zoning enforcement officer Roland Jean, if he's here. There's some issues that involve his determinations. And then we'll hear from any members of the public wishing to speak and then we'll hear from planning board members, what your questions are. And then after that, we have to decide, are we ready to vote on either of these things tonight? But if we're not, we're going to adjourn the hearing to a date certain, which would probably be November 5th or November 19th. If we do it that way, it saves, you know, having to re-advertise and all. So I want to try to follow that and I think Christine's gonna help me get on, keep on track on that. So let's begin by hearing from Mr. Curtis or, or Mr. Dubois, who's ever doing your presentation. We have, just by way of, let's see. Our plans are from, I don't know whether there are later plans, these plans are dated 6/28/2020. Which were the original ones submitted to, to us, I believe. Okay.
All right, I'm Jason Dubois from DC Engineering and Survey, representing CJ Realty Trust. I'm not sure the plans you have, I thought you have a revision one, which was 8/12 of 20.
Well, I do have a note, I don't know whether you can see this. It says, probably not, right? It says in the box in the corner, the date is still 6/28/20, but then it says revision number and it says one.
Okay, I think in the middle of the plan, on the bottom, it would say the revision date.
Excuse me, point of information, I spoke with Mr. Curtis and he stated that the plans that were submitted on 6/28, the original plans were the ones we were going to go with. Those were the ones that were circulated to the police department, fire department, board of health, CONCOM and other agencies that needed it. I was told that was the one we were going to go with before this meeting.
Okay.
I think part of that is because of the, we were in process of, you know, in the timeline to get to meet tonight. We couldn't get the other ones done in time, but you know, you could talk, you can do a presentation based on this and tell us what the differences are. We'd probably have to, you know, extend to get everything in, but at least it's a start because this has been submitted quite a long time ago, so do you want to start?
Yeah. I'm pretty sure that that plan that you have is revision one, because it does say revision one on the bottom right side. So I think, I think you do have the same plans I have in front of me here. So I'll just kind of go through the plans. You know, it is a self-storage facility that we're proposing here. This was part of a larger parcel of land that did have an A and R approved a few, couple of months back. And that other parcel, shown as lot 2.1 on that plan has been sold off to another entity. So we're left with approximately 5.5 acres of land in the commercial district and a rear portion of that property is in the residential agricultural district that we're not utilizing any of that part of the property. Also, you know, part of this property is in a zone A, water protection area, which from our first go around with the plans, we learned that you cannot have no stormwater, you know, basins located in that, in that zone. So we did revise that to be outside of that zone. So we have an entrance coming in off of, off of Route 68, off of Gardner Road, entering into the site and in there is a series of self-storage buildings ranging from 20 feet by 10 feet, all the way up to 40 feet long by 10 feet wide. There are different rows that you can see on the plan with traffic circulation, basically being two-way traffic throughout the site. All aisles are 24 to 25 feet wide to allow that, that double traffic flow throughout the site. Grading wise, we do have a high point that runs basically up the middle of the property, between the storage units and sheds the water to the north side of the property and the southern side of the property into drainage swales on both sides that then, that then routes the water down to a detention area located adjacent to the street. And that ultimately discharges to the southwesterly corner of the property. And also the existing conditions, drainage patterns follow that same area. And you know, a lot of the site does flow to that, that same corner, which does have a double graded catch basin located very close to that corner that discharges underneath Gardner Road. So as you're aware, you know, we have gone, we have gone through a couple of revisions, you know, with Bill on this, on the site. I think we're almost there. I know there's still some questions on, on some drainage, drainage items, parking, lighting. And I think those are the, those are kind of the main, I guess, topics that, that still need, need to be worked out a bit. Other than that, I think, I mean, I guess, turn it back over to the, to the board and see where they want to go from there.
Okay, um, I, yes. Oh Christine, I was gonna let Bill speak next to what, where the, where the state of negotiations stand. And we have had some issues also raised by the public, but we'll save them and try to address them perhaps later, but Bill, you want to continue on?
Yeah, is the, is the billing inspector gonna participate? Because he had, he gave me some comments and I'd rather him address them before I address them.
We invited him to come, I don't know whether he's available, is he? Christina?
He is not here ma'am.
Okay.
Well, you can hold off on those things and if you want, maybe he'll show up and start on the issues that, that you've worked on, that you've hammered out on this.
He did, he did give written comments, so I can refer back to his written comments.
Okay, good.
So there are a whole bunch of things that we had comments on many, many pages. And some of them were discretionary items, both by the billing inspector and by the planning board. And the billing inspector answered quite a few of them. So I'll just very quickly go through what he said in his response. We mentioned that we didn't think that zoning allows a drainage basin in the front offset, which is where the drainage basin is. And the billing inspector says a drainage basin would not be considered an accessory structure or building and as such, I believe it would be allowed in the front setback. I'm not really sure that that's what the, the article that we're referring to says, because it says that everything other than utilities are not allowed in the front setback. If you consider the drainage basin a utility, then it would be allowed. There was an extended discussion about whether parking spaces are required or not. Because, and, and I of course want Mr. Curtis or Mr. Dubois to address it a little bit later on. They have represented to the billing commissioner that no employees will be full-time on this site and therefore no parking spaces are allowed under the zoning bylaw. The billing inspector agrees that the way the zoning bylaw reads, if there are no employees, no parking spaces are required. But he recommends that the planning board consider asking for parking spaces because it makes sense. We had an issue with the, the applicant is proposing asphalt millings for a surface and that's essentially ground up asphalt that's reapplied, put on the ground. It's better than gravel, but it's not the same as pavement. And the bylaw requires a properly bound asphalctic surface. And the billing inspector said that, in his opinion, compact millings are not considered properly bound and would not be allowed by this office, so I think he's answered that question.
Okay, so not allowed, okay, has to be a bound, okay.
Yeah, he doesn't consider the millings to be compliant. Shade trees, the bylaw says that you need shade trees per parking space. So once again, we're in a circular conversation going on here. Parking spaces are shown on the latest plan, but they're in the front setback, they're not allowed to be in the front setback. And if the planning board and the applicant agree to parking spaces or not, that's not a judgment call on my part. Then shade trees are required per the number of parking spaces. So that, that resolved quite a few of these deliberative things and then we had some very small things. That, which they have talked about that length and we've agreed to disagree the, when I spoke with Mr. Dubois and Mr. Curtis, they said that they would get us a detail on what the sign out front would look like. But we haven't done that and so just to back up a little bit. We've looked, my offices looked at these plans and Mr. Dubois has changed them, he's changed them at least twice and I've looked at them three separate times. So from the first receipt by the planning board to where we are now, we've gone through these plans and we've had quite a bit of communication, many, many changes. So that's why I'm kind of taking my time as we go through, looking at some of my review information. The big issue, I guess, for us is the drainage. If you look at the plan, and I don't know, Christina, can you pull that up or can you make me share her?
Yes, one moment please. Which plan are you looking for?
S1, site plan.
I just allowed you to share, go ahead.
Here's green. Everybody see that?
No.
How about now?
Yep.
Oh.
Y'all see it?
Yes.
Affirmative.
Okay, so what we've got is we've got a drainage basin here in the front. This is the driveway, these are the parking spaces that they revised, added and modified and are still up for discussion. The issue that we have is we've looked at the drainage basin and I spoke with the DPW director and I physically went out there and looked at this pipe. So this is a double catch basin, it's a 12-inch reinforced concrete pipe, it's in good condition. The problem that we have is the way the system is designed, it doesn't attenuate and it actually puts more water to that catch basin than the pipe that drains that catch basin can handle. So it hasn't been modeled correctly. And the, the connection from their basin flowing across the earth into that basin with fairly large flows for fairly small storms is a very poor way to do it. It'll eventually erode into a channel, which will may impact that catch basin. But bottom line is that catch basin and pipe can't handle the 10-year flow that comes out of this drainage basin. And it would be negatively impacting that catch basin. And Travis Brown agreed with me that he does not want an above-ground surface connection nor does he want a connection that's going to surcharge or cause that pipe not to be able to function properly. So the drainage is, is a significant issue. They also have a landscape plan, which is, you know, they are showing some landscaping, but as we had mentioned, Madam Chair and I, that this is in the front yard. It's gonna be fenced and it's going to be probably not a very pretty thing. And it is in the center of town, so we might want to consider beyond making sure that the drainage system works, that there's a little more aesthetics applied to the front of the site than was proposed. The bottom line is we can't sign off on this drainage system design and there are other, other aspects to it that don't work, but I don't want to get into them because they're pretty technical. So there have to be some pretty large changes to the site plan in order to make it work. And I think that a little more coordination with the DPW as to what he would find acceptable would probably be a very good idea.
Bill, can you also address, actually I asked the same thing of, of Mr. Dubois, the lighting plan that was presented to us?
Yeah, that's, the lighting, he did give you a lighting plan, which is put on him, but it stops at the property lines or stops at the end of pavement. So as we all know, lighting, what we call it light splash, it goes beyond the end of pavement, but the analysis only went to the end of pavement. And we wanted to go beyond to see if it's gonna actually cross the property line and impact a neighbor or anyone else. The lighting fixtures that they've chosen are full cutoff wall packs. So if properly installed, you won't be able to see the actual light source, you'll just be able to see the light cast down because they'll be shielded.
And they're not motion activated, they're on all night or?
We don't have clarity, we don't have clarity on that yet.
Do you want to add anything to that? I guess we should start from the top and let you respond point by point. I, I get Mr. Roland is not on yet, is he? Is he here? Christina, no?
No ma'am.
Okay, I, I don't know, I do want to turn this over, we do have some people from the public that are listening, that are waiting it to be heard as well.
I would like to respond if I, Madam Chair.
Do you want to hear the other comments and respond to all or would you like to respond to Bill's first? I'll let you respond to Bill's first.
Yeah, I can.
Okay.
I can wait, whatever's, whatever's easier.
Okay, let's hear, let's hear also what the public has to say, I have a list and you can keep your list before we get into back and forth. But I'm not, I'm not sure there is anybody from the public, but I think there is.
There are two, ma'am, I've unmuted or attempted to unmute the two members of the public.
Okay. We want to, do we want to hear from Kelly Echaboni, is that how you say it?
Yeah, Kelly Echaboni.
First? And then we'll hear from Tom?
I'm here.
Okay, so Kelly first and then Tom Brecko, right?
I, I have no issues, I'm just here to observe the plan and I am happy that that property is being developed.
Okay, thank you very much, all right, for your input. And Tom Brecko, would you like to be heard?
Sure, my biggest, big concern is the lighting. We live on the next street over and there's a lot of lights around, we're just concerned that it's not gonna be excessive light pollution. And then the other question is, as I have is, is this gonna be open to the public 24 hours a day? Or is this, they're gonna have regular hours or how's it gonna work?
Okay. All right.
Also, Madam Chair?
Yes?
We have a note here from the board of health, that they would like it determined whether any hazardous or automobile material will be permitted within these storage units and what would be done for disposal of any materials in those units, should they need to be disposed of.
Okay. Okay, I'm jotting these down and I'm inclined to, to, to just let Mr. Dubois address them one-on-one if you want to, okay? So I guess we could start with the basin in the offset. That seems to be a problem in this strange cross, cross situation. I guess it ties into point one that Bill raised and also the point seven I have. Have you thought about the drainage? How you might rectify it, I, we can't have flooding out on Gardner Road, which is just redone for millions of dollars by the state, you know, so.
No, I, I mean, I absolutely agree with that. So basically, you know, as, as Bill said, it is a lot of technical things that are involved with, with this type of, you know, part of the project. And we rely on, you know, HydroCAD modeling, which is a program we use for, for modeling this site as it currently sits in the existing condition. And we actually modeled, you know, that catch basin is an analysis point that we model. And basically, you know, the second page of the drainage report shows the total runoff going to catch basin one, which is what we called it in the plans. And you can see that it's broken down into the, the two, the 10, the 25 and 100-year storm events. And it, it, you know, it clearly shows in the drainage report that this. And it, you know, it clearly shows in the drainage report that there's a decrease in runoff coming off the site in all of those storms. You know, and there is some variability in in the HydroCAD analysis. That, you know, you don't always, you you have to make some assumptions. You know, just by by reading the topography of the site. But, you know, further. That's only a 12 inch pipe in in the in the street. And it's, you know, it's somewhere around a one or a 2% slope on that pipe, which doesn't handle a whole lot of water. And as it is, my existing conditions numbers show that that pipe is already flooding, which it's. I'm assuming there's not any issues with that pipe. And, you know, all we can go by under the stormwater handbook. Is we we do pre-development and post-development runoff numbers. And we have to make those numbers not exceed the existing condition numbers. So by using that catch basin as an analysis point and showing what the numbers are going to it, we're decreasing all of those numbers for every storm event. So if there's not a problem there now. You know, I don't believe that there will be a problem there in the future, considering that we are decreasing the flow rate going to it. And, you know, the size of the pipe is out of our control. That's something that was that was put in by whoever. But again, you know, I I use that specific point as my modeling point for my analysis. And we're decreasing the flow that's going to it when this site is developed by the use of the detention basin. So that, you know, that's. I I guess at this point, you know, I don't really know where to go from here with that. I I guess I will also maybe set up a meeting with DPW and go over the drainage report with him. I don't know if, you know. You know, I don't know if maybe Bill didn't go over the actual drainage report numbers with DPW to 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 point that out to him that we're actually making it less flow than what's currently going to it. Well, you know, that's, that's about all.
On this issue. It's a highly technical issue. We are laypeople on the board. We do have. You know, we do have to protect the town, right? Our engineer says to us, a 10 year storm, which we all know will be the new five year storm with climate warming. Will take out, will flood the road. It's just a situation that. It just has to be remediated to his satisfaction, I think. Now, that could be by. Redoing the analysis and seeing if it comes out different or coming up with a different drainage plan. You know, we we'd like to work with you on that, but. Can't have situation. You understand?
I just want to reiterate that that even the 10 year storm. The existing conditions. Is also showing that the numbers are too big. And that is what's currently sitting on the site now without doing any site improvements. And that my proposed development as it's designed is a decrease in those numbers for the 10 year storm. So I'm actually making it less than what's currently there. I'm not making any additional water go to it. It's actually a decrease in what's currently on the site. I just wanted to. Point that out. So I I guess, you know, I'll have to.
Maybe if you take that argument, if it's presently insufficient. The pipe is presently insufficient. Doesn't solve the problem, you know what I mean? It's gotta be.
But there's not, right. But I mean, what is, what is the board?
Flood out 68 inches. Has to, has to be addressed. I have. Put that on the to be. To be worked on further, for lack of a better. Just so we can address some of the other issues. Am I thinking that maybe tonight, we can at least narrow the scope of what we. You know, so we can move this project along. I don't think personally, we can get to like approval of anything tonight. But but let's work on these.
Okay.
Would that be all right with the board members? Okay, so do you would his address? And this is something.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Francois.
Question. And this is again, looking at it from a purely men's perspective. The land currently in question is totally undeveloped. And I'm assuming that. The water that comes as a result of any rain that falls right now. Some of it percolates through the ground and then eventually, I mean, it just basically goes goes into the ground. Having pay, if this is paved and there's structures with roofs and so forth. I I'm kind of puzzled by the fact that you're indicating that there will be less water that is going into this area when. At least from my perspective, when I see paved roads and I see buildings and I see roofs and so forth. That basically, that water will start actually accumulating and then run into those catch basins. And so therefore. Instead of percolating down into the ground, will actually be going. Can you explain why there would be less water going here?
Yep. So basically, by the use of the detention basin itself is is the whole purpose of that. So it's a. You know, it's a way for the water to, you know, settle out and also slow down before it's released to the analysis point. So. You know, everything, the swales are routed into that depression area. It's four foot deep. Or it's a it's a three and a half foot deep. You know, ponding area for the water to sit in and it's released in a controlled manner. So our HydroCAD model. You know, it goes through that. It calculates, you know, time and concentration on how long it takes the water to get to that point. And it gives you runoff numbers in cubic feet per second that that's coming out. So, you know, the 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 main, the main design, you know, one of the main standards in the stormwater handbook is. Attenuating peak peak runoff numbers. And we have to meet those numbers. We cannot increase the flow off of the site.
So if I may, and I'm I'm just looking at your detention basin. It seems to me that it is a depression of roughly about three feet. Do not know what the exact volume is, but I'm assuming therefore that. The volume of water that would be running off from all of this area that is right now, well, on your plan at least shows. As eventually being paved or having structures on it, you're indicating to me that that would. From a volume perspective, over the period of time from the models that you have. Be possible to retain that in that detention basin. And a gradual flow going therefore into the into the drainage facility that is currently in place. That that that's how it's working, right?
Yes. Yes.
Is there any, is there any percolation happening at the detention basin itself?
There's really nothing modeled and that's due to the fact of groundwater elevations on the site. So you need to have a certain separation in order to take any credit. For any groundwater recharge. So, you know, is there going to be some recharge taking place? Yes, there will be, but we can't take credit for that. In our model because of the the fact that groundwater is so high. So, you know, to go further, our numbers will probably be even less than what we're. Posing because of that fact.
Thank you.
I have a question too is the, does the entire property drain to slope into this basement, this basin or does? You said there was a divide. Where does the rest of the water? Where is that divide and where does the rest of it drain?
If you could go into different plans that the the very last plan, it shows. You know, different subcatchments of where the water is going to different areas of the site.
I think I can get.
There's actually.
There we go.
Yeah, so you can see the dark lines and there's there's basically three different subcatchments on the site. And you basically have to match. You know, the existing conditions, which we have a map for this as well for the existing conditions. So basically, what's going to that catch basin is the area with the storage units on them. And then the other smaller area that's. You know, adjacent to the road that that is not going into the the detention base. And so you put these two models into a program and it basically spits out. You know, the the overall runoff numbers.
So none of the run, none of the, this is a north, south oriented, the north is, oh, I see the north arrow is different. Okay, to the back of the property. There's no runoff to the back of the property. Why is that?
The way that the existing topography is on the site is kind of a high point that just happens to be along the rear stone wall. And also along the back, I guess if you're looking at the plan, the back right. Boundary line is also kind of a raised, kind of hump along the property line. So everything, everything pretty much stays on the site and it does flow towards the street.
Which are the number, which are the numbers that we're seeing, which is like it's you you start at 10, 1040, then 1041, 1042. Those I'm assuming are elevations in feet, correct?
Yes, yes.
So I see to your point that there's a high point at the back, which is at 1048.
So just to interject if I may.
Yes, Bill.
We have more issues than just the flow, but if you look at the basin that they've got designed. And I'll I'll go to the other plan in a second. They have over here test all data and it shows redox at 28 inches. What redox means is seasonal high groundwater. This is the 1040 contour running right through the center of the basin. So when they did their test holes, they have. Evidence of seasonal high groundwater, two feet down, which puts it just a little bit less than 1038. Which is just about the bottom of the basin, which means they're intercepting groundwater with the bottom of the basin. They have a very large pipe at 1038, which is a 15 inch pipe, which is bigger than 12 inch pipe in the street. So it's, we know how he's modeled it and I've heard what he's had to say, but. If you have 12 inch pipes, two 12 inch pipes or 18 inch pipes coming into the basin. And you have a 15 inch pipe coming out of the basin. It's going to go in and go out. And it's not going to attenuate. There'll be head losses. There'll be all these kinds of things that we talk about. But it's going to flow through that thing and it's going to, even as calculation. So it's going to flow through very quickly. We have more great, technical drainage issues. I'm not saying that his description is wrong. But there are enough technical issues that we have that are substantive. That the drainage doesn't work in our opinion and will cause the town problems. There is another catch basin over here. He does have potentially the ability to split and divide. And by flowing across the surface of the ground, if we get any meaningful storm. There's going to be water coming out of the pipe at a velocity that's going to cause an erosion channel. And that's not an acceptable design or practice. I explained that to Travis and he agreed. He doesn't want anything that's going to add potential issues silt up. His drainage basins. So there probably are ways around this. I'm sure there are ways that we can work around this, but this design as it it's. Is presented, isn't something we can recommend planning board approve. And then just to go backwards a little bit, Francois, what we're talking about and what Jason was talking about. Is more water will in fact reach that catch basin because you're paving over a pervious surface. What the regulations require is the rate of water. So if you have a stream in your backyard and somebody paves upstream of it. You can't have more water. It can't flood the stream anymore than it did prior to construction. What happens is the stream stays higher longer. So we're controlling the rate, not the volume, because there's always an increase in the volume when you pave over a surface. So that that is part of our technical review that we just aren't going to let go of. We don't believe that we have a compliant plan with the stormwater regulations. We're not saying that he can't do it. We're just saying that what's presented, in our opinion, doesn't work and we'd like to work with him more.
Okay, let's move to some of the other issues that maybe are less technical that the board can put, have some input on. Unless you think that's inappropriate and you think we should stop everything till we solve the drainage issue. To go ahead and talk about parking and surfacing and so forth?
Yeah, because I think, you know, they're going to want to do this in one, one more revision and we're going to want to look at it in one more.
Okay, all right. Well, let's, let's move on. Unless anybody on my board really objects to this parking space issue. So what Bill says, which I, which is right, is that you can't put parking spaces in the setbacks. They'd have to move them. And you had proposed four of them, is that correct? In the way, this plan shows four of them, but they're all in the buffer. Could you know why? Can you tell us your reasoning behind four? I mean, was it just a?
So I had, no, I I had called the building inspector originally and we discussed the, you know, the zoning bylaw, which which says, you know, you need to have the. Basically, if there's no, no employees on site, you know, the zoning bylaw says there's zero parking spaces required. So I I believe the first go around, we had no parking spaces proposed. This set of plans, you know, it it felt like it was that we added spaces. So we did add four spaces there, which they, you know, they fit there. And also the back, the rear of the site, we had two spaces added to the end of that last back row of. Storage units, because again, it's it's where a couple of spaces would fit. You know, it, I didn't, I didn't show them on this plan. Because we did, we're not really designating them in this area. But basically, on the end of the rows, on the left side of the of the rows, there is, you know, there is room for a car. To park there if they felt they wanted to park there. And also, you know, again, going through. Multiple storage, self-storage designs that we've gone through in different towns. And being on site, usually what happens is the people, you know, the people that are moving or filling up a unit, they'll pull in with like a box truck. And the people that are helping them will usually just park behind them in the row, right in front of their their garage door bay. So, you know, we still feel that is really unnecessary to have, you know, many parking spaces on this site. If any are even really required to be designated. But, you know, on a following revision, you know, we have taken off of those, those parking spaces that are in the front setback. And we've just kept the ones in the back of of the site. So there are a couple designated areas for people to park. So that's.
So this plan. Shows four in the back and 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 you'd have to remove these four in the front to comply with our zoning bylaws.
Yes.
Question, if the, if the box truck comes in, I think we've all used storage. Had storage locker experiences. And the people park on the row, which I agree they do. Do they not block all the other lockers in that row?
They, they would definitely block them, but what happens is, you know, you get a few people each day that might come to their unit if that. And, you know, a lot of them go days without ever seeing their occupant. So. You know, and the people that are there, they're there for, depending on if they're just grabbing something or if they're actually moving, obviously, they're going to be there for an hour to unload the truck. But, you know, they just, I I assume that they would just move out of the way if the person came in and needed to get something out of there, you know, from behind their garage door.
Well.
I mean, I, I don't know.
The units, the storage units, you know, there is no possibility for any on-street parking here. This is a state highway. So, you know, you don't have that sort of overflow capacity. And it seems to me that. Almost anybody that's moving a storage locker, you know, has their, their brother or their cousin or somebody bringing a car on site. And there's a case to be made for on-site parking, but I will hear what other people feel on the board. So. Bill, you want to weigh in on parking?
Well, my big concern and. Actually Roland had a comment that I'll pull up in a minute. My big concern is, I too have had experiences with these units. And people tend to park either behind the truck or if it's a busy day, let's say it's a Saturday or a Sunday prior to kids moving out, moving in or whatever. They park at the ends of the aisles. Along the edges here. And then that immediately gets us into fire and EMS access. Oh, you're not looking at my plan? So I I believe, I believe that they have every right to say that they do not need to provide parking. Roland agrees that that's what the bylaw says, which we both agree needs to be changed. But I think from an operational aspect, that parking should be provided on site. Just to prevent people from parking where they're not supposed to be. Or if that's not what they want to do, then we're going to insist upon a lot of signage. No parking here, no parking here, no parking here, which of course doesn't necessarily work. It's not going to be a policed facility.
Anybody else on the board want to weigh in on this?
One thing I note from the plan that I'm seeing right now, I think the. the 25-foot distance between the side of the buildings to the, to what I'm assuming must be either trees or some other, you know, fences or things of that nature are troubling, because they are potential choke points. And, and if parking is not clearly designated or available, and people do park in areas that are potential choke points, that can become a hazard. I mean, I agree, this is not a high-traffic facility. It is, however, the eventuality of a risk that can occur needs to be looked into, and those 25-foot setback limits is indeed concerning.
Chair, can I share with you what Roland wrote?
Yes.
After reviewing the plan, it seems if the building in front was eliminated, that the whole project could be moved away from the road, alleviating many of these concerns and making room for some parking, just the thought.
So this would be, you're talking about this little strip that's in the very front? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10? Well, I do think parking should be in the front, because I don't think anybody's going to drive all the way back to the back corner to park. So, but that's just my opinion. That's not a vote of the board, and I do think you need some parking spaces. I just have never been to a storage unit with no parking spaces, honestly, especially when you're on a main.
Alice, Bill Homans.
Yeah, Bill, go ahead.
I have to agree. I believe in the front would be the best, it'd be the best way to keep the place secure. And you need a good floor around the building, so you don't choke the place up. I think it's a good addition, and I agree with Bill. And the building inspector, we probably need to look at our bylaw.
So maybe there's a suggestion coming out of this, that the lot, the four lots that the board would like to see, the four lots that cannot be, parking spaces that cannot be put in the frontage area, be moved around the corner and preserved. At least as four lots, I, I don't know that, I mean, four, I would be, four is a pretty small number. And you're going to have a a person that will come in and meet people to let them in, or to rent, lease them lockers. You're going to have some kind of agent that's going to need to park now and then, aren't you? Say I want to rent a locker on your facility, I would have to meet one of your agents there to show me the locker, would I not?
I agree, however, you know, being that the site is fairly large, they're not going to park and then walk a few hundred feet. I'm assuming they're just going to drive up to the door and get out of the car. I don't know if Mr. Curtis would like to speak. He's run these sites. He's owned them, so. If he's on.
Is Mr. Curtis on?
Yes, ma'am.
Hello?
Hello. Do you, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't recognize.
No, I'd like to speak. I'd like to speak, and I, and I was trying to speak before about the basin. I wanted to talk about the basin also. I had questions on that, but as far as the parking, we'll stick with that. I mean, I have no problem keeping it as simple as we possibly can. I mean, if I have to eliminate a couple of the units here, just if you come in and go to the right, that's fine. We, we take out some of those units there, and we allow parking, if that's what the board would like to see. My experience with these is, you know, they, they, for some reason, storage, self-storage facilities always look pretty empty, but they're really not. They're, they might be full, but there's just really nobody there. And then to answer the question, as far as somebody coming to check on things, yes, there will be someone that'll, that'll routinely pass through and check aisles, and make sure there's no trash and no personal belongings outside the doors, that we can keep the place tidy. So again, wherever the board would like to see the parking, I can create some parking. If, if it, if it comes down that I gotta, that I have to eliminate a few units, that's, that's no problem.
Oh, great. Well, I do think the board would like to see the parking.
Okay.
And I think it, at least four, maybe six spots. I mean, you've got a couple in the back. They could remain in the back. But I think the most people are going to come in. You know, and if they're bringing a big truck, I, maybe they'd park there, but I think they, I mean, in front of the unit, but I think they might be willing to park in front and join the, the rest of the family with the truck at the unit. And I do think your agent needs, you'd have an agent showing somebody a unit. You've got two cars right there, whenever you show a unit that would be taken. So, so consider that redraft. I mean, I can't speak for the whole board, but it's a plan to think about and present to us. Do you want to go back and address the basin issue?
Sure.
I didn't mean to leave you out of the discussion. Go ahead.
And the, the piece there that I'm struggling with is I've had two different engineering firms. P's, professional engineers, review this to make sure that the flow is going to be adequate before Jay had presented this. I'm listening to Bill. Bill's saying, that won't work. But then I'm dealing with two different engineering firms that are saying, this meets the criteria. So my question is, who's reviewing? Is it Bill that's doing the review? Is it a P? Is it someone from his firm? I mean, I've got two professional engineers overseeing this. I just, you know, and then, and then if that's the case, what would Bill like us to do? How would he, you know? I'm open for ideas. And like the other engineer said, meets the criteria, it definitely, you know, but if this, if, if Bill has a better idea, we're open mind.
Okay. Bill, you want to?
Jason knows one of our P's. He recently migrated from a different firm. And our principal engineer, Susan Carter, is a professional civil engineer with a specialty in hydrology. We're the review engineers for four different towns. And we're, they, my engineers are experts at the stormwater standards. I don't want to get into the technical discussion of what to do on this basin, because there are multiple issues that we would like addressed. I don't think that's worth the board's time, and I don't think that we should do it in the public hearing, because everybody else will fall asleep. But more, more than willing to have another chat with you and describe what we see as non-compliance. And not only non-compliance, we look at constructability and maintenance. And the constructability and maintenance of this design is going to cause the town a problem, the way it's designed. And it's not, in our minds, even slightly debatable. It's pretty apparent. So.
Tell me this here, Bill.
Pardon me?
You would, you had mentioned going over into the other basin, correct?
The water that's coming out of this basin has a velocity, what we call an erosive velocity. Even with the riprap, it's going to erode between the basin and the existing catch basin. That dirt's going to form a channel, and it's going to rut. While it does that, it's going to carry silt and all sorts of things into the municipal drainage.
Let me, I, I, let me rephrase the question, Bill. You pointed out, there's one on the north side of 68, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that what you'd like us to also tie into? Because if I, I'd rather nail this down now, Bill, because the meat has been clicking every time I call you. I've got more into spending with you than I do with the engineer. So I'd like to just get some straight-up answers, Bill, as far as, is that what you'd like us to do, tie in over there? We can. I mean, I want to, I want to accommodate the board, but at the, at the same time, you know, this is, it's, I've got 8,000 bucks into just having you review it. Is that correct? 7,500 or so? So what I'm asking here, Bill, just give us some direction. If you want us to tie in there, we'll do a revision, we'll change it, and we'll, we'll also tie in there.
Mark, I'm not your designer. I'm the reviewer. The, the answer to the question is, it very much depends on how you do it.
Well, here's, here's the question, Bill, though. You, you are the reviewer. I just don't want to keep proposing things running the tab here.
Can, can perhaps, is a suggestion, your engineer meet, the two engineers meet before you?
We've tried. We've done this. We've done this. Everything sounds like it's all good. And then we see these reports that are, you know, it's horrific. So I don't know what to say from here. You know, the only thing I can say is, what we're going to do, if, if Bill has a suggestion on something, we can fulfill it. But I, I just need to know, just so I'm not, you know, wasting everybody's time.
Direction you can, without.
Bill, I think I have, I just have a question. If, I think if, if we potentially break this basin up into multiple, you know, four-inch pipes, whatever it may be, that whatever the hydrocatheters work out to be, you know, multiple outlets, so they would be less velocity. Do you feel that would potentially help? Instead of having one 15-inch pipe, as long as the numbers still, still work, if we have multiple. I mean, you know, I'm, I'm not going to be able to change the fact that the existing conditions is also overburdening the pipe. So all I can do is meet those existing numbers. I can't make it zero. So. You know, I think there's got to be a little bit of understanding in that.
You, you can make it a less impact than it is currently.
Right, which I believe our numbers show that that is the case already.
So this is already the answer to Mark's question. Mark, there's many ways to make this happen. One of the, the issues we have is overlap flow to a catch basin. You can't, and you can't discharge, you can't drill a hole in the side of a catch basin. From a detention basin, it'll start it all up.
Would you be comfortable, Bill, if we tie into the other basin? That's really, before, before I do a, you know, do a redesign on this, I just want to make sure I'm going in the right direction.
Again, I think that your engineer and my engineers, Jason has worked with Pat Burke before. They can sit down, and they can work out something that probably will work, but it's all in the execution.
Can we move on to some of these other issues? I, I don't know how we, as a layboard, can solve this for you, gentlemen. You know, it has to be worked out by people that understand hydraulics. It's not, not against the project in any way. It's just.
No, I understand.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm thinking that you could get together and come back with some kind of drainage plan that would work. I like the idea of putting four to six parking lot spaces in the front, or, and maybe leaving a couple in the back, if that's a place you've already cited them, so there'd be some places to park. I don't know that there's a magic number. It's a shame that our, our, you know, we don't, we don't have a parking plan and direction from Roland, but we don't. But I do think that some's needed, and you're willing to do it, so let's, let's try to solve that one that way with a new plan. And let's move on to some of the other issues. So the milling, we need a properly bound surface. I guess that's non-negotiable. That's what our rules require. Is there an issue with that?
I, you know, if, if that's the requirement, it's the requirement. You know, I, I did, I did plan on paving from 68 on in beyond the, the second row, and, you know, have all of that asphalt, and then have the millings throughout the aisles, because there isn't a great deal of elevation change there, where it's not like it's a big hill or anything. And I was just wondering if, if I could have millings there, you know, to help keep the cost down, but I understand, you know, right where the board's coming from, too, and I respect it.
All right. Well, I mean, you can, I suppose there are ways of asking for relief, but I don't know that we'd be inclined to grant it, you know, if it's a hard, fast rule. So the shade trees, I think you can give us shade trees per parking space. I do think one thing that's important is that this is a very highly visible property as you go through the town. So streetscape actually does matter. And to have, you know, a row of trees also in front, where you have the parking spaces, would be very helpful, as well as anything else you could do aesthetically. I know that you say the buildings are going to be 12 feet tall, that's all. So will they be painted in aesthetic color, fencing, you know, we need to think about aesthetics, but.
So if I could just.
Trees, I don't think that should be a problem. It's also a fairly standard regulation, one tree per spot, right?
Yep. So through the chair, I don't know if we could pull up the landscaping plan. I know there's been a series of comments on the landscaping as well. I mean, I, I feel as though we've added quite a bit of landscaping to this plan. There's a, there's a lot of trees, a lot of shrubbery, you know, shown along the street, and also along the southern of butter, since there is no, you know, natural buffer between that and butter.
Do you have that available?
Yep, looking for it. Jason, what sheet number is it?
I think it's five, maybe, or four. What do you have? It's L1, if you have it under the letters.
I have S1.
Anybody see that?
Were these the big plans, or the subset of plans? There was a smaller set of plans.
It says I'm sharing. Now, anybody see it?
Yeah, I can see.
Oh, okay. Can you, can you get closer? Yeah. Oh, I see. Okay.
So I, you know, I just would like some input from the board, if they want to see more than that. I just, I feel like we've already, we've already have quite a bit shown on here.
What about to the left side of the driveway?
There's an existing tree line there. You can see that squiggly line.
I see, okay.
Yeah. So that's all wooded from there into the north.
To the north, and then the, the residential properties in the back are well-screened. I know that is a residential area. Is that treed already?
Yeah, that's, that's the existing tree line again.
Okay, and you're not going to cut into that much?
Actually, that's, that's the proposed tree line, so we are, we are cutting into that, but that's the proposed line. So behind that is, will stay trees. And there is an opening in the back of the property that, right in that area, that there just is no, you know, it's, it's basically they're using it, it looks like people have been riding dirt bikes and things in there. But there is a, there will be a, a treed section before you get to the rear of the property.
So is there a fence around this whole process, or just a gate at the, at the entry?
There is no fence around the property, and I guess that actually brings up another point, is if the board feels that it is necessary, I think Mr. Curtis would like to just eliminate the gate and, and, you know, just allow the site to be open.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Well, we can think about that.
And, and, and also, this, this is Mark Curtis speaking. I have no problem adding more trees, if, if the board would like that. And also, I do agree, right along the front of 68, it's in the center of town. It really should, from an appearance standpoint, you know, be, be dressed out nice.
Yes, okay.
You know, with nice streams, some nice vegetation. You know, because it's, and I don't have a problem with that.
Is there, is there a feeling on the rest of the board about, about either plant or fencing?
I do have a question, and that is with regards, and it goes hand in hand with, I think, a comment made earlier about the hours of operation. And that is, is if there is no fencing, no gates, what's the accessibility into this location? What's the planned accessibility to this location?
You know, base, I'm not sure on what the, what the town requires, you know, as far as if they have 24-hour zoning there, but we're not going to have 20, you know, we're not going to allow, allow 24 hours a day. It would, you know, it would be monitored hours, but I, I understand just what you're saying, because what's to stop them from coming in?
Correct. How are you enforcing that, if you were saying that it's not going to be available for 20, around the clock?
Well, I guess, I guess that answers that. We'll have to have a gate there, an electronic gate, so, or a key gate.
Bill Homans here. Alice, don't, don't you have security at most of these sites that you have, sir? Just to keep people out, to secure the belongings of the folks that own them, and each one of these storage lockers?
Yeah, you know, we do, we patrol them, keep an eye on it and everything, and whatever the hours are that it's gonna be designated for it. People, tenants, they pretty much respect it, if they can't go in there after eleven, or whatever, whatever the time might may be. You know, we haven't had, really had an issue with that, people are pretty respectful on it, tenants are. And if there's, if there's a key gate, key access, or something, that could also maybe be a solution, too, to it.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Are your other properties fenced?
Not totally, across the front they are, across the front they are, and, you know, someone on the sides. But if somebody really wanted to, you know, walk all the ways around and come in the back or something, that's, you know, they could. But again, there's cameras all through the place, we can see the cameras twenty-four hours a day. There's motion detect, the lighting, so that as soon as they start moving in there, lights kick on. You know, we really haven't had a big issue with it. Most people go to their storage facility during, you know, during the day, with daylight hours, or in the evening. You know, I haven't really had an issue with anybody going in very, you know, real late at night.
Because I, I'm not a big fan of high fences, I, I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it. I do think you need gates, right, and you may need, and you certainly need to fence this detention basin, probably, right?
I believe so, Jay could answer that.
So and I do think you need, I do think you need the gate. Maybe you wouldn't have to fence on the left side of the drive, though, where you get into the tree line, maybe you could just do the...
And, you know, if need be, it could be, it could be, you know, it doesn't need to be a real tall fence either. It could be a fence that it's possibly, like a four-foot fence or five-foot fence, just to, you know, so they get the message, you know, it's closed.
Right, if you could do it in black or green, or, you know...
Exactly.
Disappear.
With vegetation in front of it to help camouflage it.
Okay, well, in your next set of plans, you wanna indicate some, a gate and the fencing, and I don't know, just, I mean, these are kinda indicated, but, but meanwhile, a little more specific? Is there anybody on the board that feels this should be all fenced entirely?
Alice, Bill Holman's, I don't think we need to need, really see the need for that. If it does down the road, that would be something they would have to look at to keep the place secure, if we had a problem, I believe. But it could always be added at a later date, but I don't think we really need that.
Okay, all right, well, we have at least a little more clarity on that issue, anybody else wanna weigh in?
Yeah, this is John, I agree, I don't think you need to fence the whole way around. If somebody wants to hop the fence, they can hop the fence, it's not gonna stop anybody.
Okay, great, all right, so we have some direction for you folks on that. Let's see, two changes, three, oh, so you, where do we go from here? The landscape plan, the lighting? We do have a lighting plan, I know that you guys have sent in. It's, I'm not quite sure what Bill wants, how he, what he thinks should be revised on that. I know he tried to tell me and I didn't quite understand it.
I do have a revised lighting.
Yep, you can revise it.
Yeah, I have a revised lighting from the lighting contract that shows zero foot candles at the property line. So once this is, once we get the site nailed down here, we'll, we'll update it again if we need to, and we'll get that, get that over.
Right, we don't, you know, we're sort of sensitive to dark skies, and we are in neighborhood, and there's, there's very little street lighting in Hubbardston, and part of that's intentional. So that would be helpful, if you could keep the lighting down, for sure.
I'm chair.
Yes, who's asking?
That's Bill.
Bill, go ahead.
So it's not a big deal, but we would like a narrative on the lighting. In other words, we wanna know, I heard Mr. Curtis say that it's gonna have motion sensors, and that's gonna tie to hours of operation, days, week, and all that kinda thing. So do some lights stay on all the time, so there's a minimal security lighting, or are they all motion sensor? What are the hours that they automatically turn, are they timer on, timer off? Some kind of description of the operation of the lights as well?
You can do that, can you not?
Definitely.
Jason, okay, and sign, I wanna talk about signage. So we have a new sign bylaw, it's not terribly different than the other sign bylaw, but Christina could provide you with a copy of it, it's a draft. If we'd like to make, I think incorporate your signage in with your plan, if you would. I don't know whether we do allow some uplet signs, some downlet signs, maybe you don't need any lighting if it's gonna be primarily a daytime operation, but we'd like to know what you're doing in the way of signage.
Yeah, and we do have a sign detail that we'll add to the plan.
Okay, so I think we, I think we're making progress, I don't know that we can get a lot further tonight. I'm willing to hear what people have to say. My suggestion would be, is that we, unless there's, I mean, I'm happy, I don't wanna cut anybody off, but...
Madam Chair, point of order, we didn't address the two points by the Board of Health regarding what would be permitted within the storage locker, whether any automotive would be permitted, and then what would be done with regards to waste disposal.
You wanna address those two, issues on the record, and...
Sure. Basically, when they, when they sign up for a unit, there's dues and do-nots in it, and what you can put in the container and what you can't put in. There's no storage of anything like gasoline or anything that, that's permitted. If there ever was a situation, we just, we just handle it the proper way. If it was, you know, rubbish, we put it in the dumpster. If there was wastewater when we cleaned out, or appeared that way, or someone left a container of oil in there, we would just go through it with, whether it's clean harbors, or one of the, one of the firms we currently deal with.
Okay, when you say the rubbish, is there, is there a dumpster on site?
There's a dumpster, there'll be a dumpster for our purposes, not for everybody to just completely fill. But when we do day-to-day cleanups, and you have to go through daily, just to pick up, to get things outside, and this and that, you know, and we need a place to put it, you know, with the rubbish.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if we could get a copy of the dues and do-nots, that way I can forward that to the Board of Health, I would appreciate it.
Would you be willing to share your contract, those provisions, your contract with them?
Yep.
Okay, send it to...
Also, Madam Chair, with regards to that letter, there was a mention of septic, but the Board of Health has since determined they are not going to push or inquire regarding septic. And the CEO did state that it wasn't required.
Yes, thanks, that has been kicked around a bit. You are the first storage locker facility in town, so you, you know, all of these are novel issues for us, but that was the CEO's determination, and I believe it is his jurisdiction to make that determination. So no, no septic and no potable water either, no, no well, no septic, which is, I know what your plans propose. I do have a question with, following up on the Board of Health, which is, what if people, they don't wanna store gasoline, but they wanna store their dirt bikes for the winter or something, do you allow vehicle storage?
Has to be completely drained. It has to be completely drained, and there can't be any fuel in it, for insurance purposes also.
And how do you enforce that? I mean, does your...
We check it, right before it goes in. If it's like, let's say it was a four-wheeler or something like that, has to be empty.
Okay, and that's a... Bill, do you have, I know I asked this question for you as well, is there, does that solve the problem?
I'm gonna have to run that by Roland. I know if you store a car, motorcycle, or anything like that in a unit, you're required to have a floor drain by plumbing code. And I know Roland would not allow anything like that, I don't know anything about dirt bikes or four-wheelers or anything like that, but he and I did have that discussion, and that's just not allowed by code. And I don't know if Mr. Curtis's explanation of draining it works or not, that's not something I know.
Is it, it probably is something that, I mean, I could imagine this really cutting into your business, it being a sticking issue. I don't know what, what percentage of those units are used for storage of vehicles, but is it something, are you in, you want to ask Roland about the contract, or maybe since you're gonna provide that contract page to Christina, we could also forward it to Roland?
Sure.
Is their policy on this issue?
Right.
And also include bigger vehicles, I mean, can you store whole sports cars?
We don't get, very, very, usually it's, if anything, it's more or less car parts, you know, more than a whole car intact, a drivable car. You know, I've had people that do restorations, and they're just keeping some parts there and storing them. But sure, I mean, I can talk to Roland about that.
Okay, 'cause I do see possibly a condition that just says, you know, whatever the appropriate language would be, no... You know, all, taking from your language, right? And perhaps no automobiles, whole automobiles, if in fact there is a store drainage, floor drain issue with that.
It's such a small percentile of the requests that you get for that, you know, that's not a problem.
All right, well, if nobody else has any more input, what we could do is take a vote to adjourn the hearing, either to have, to allow you to get a new set of plans with all these things in it. I'm hoping it could be a last set. I don't know, can we take it any further tonight, for you?
Do you have any more questions, Jay?
No, I'm all set.
I do think we didn't address turnarounds, which I know was an issue raised by Bill in his notes. Do we need to address that before we quit?
No, we ran, we ran the actual turn program using the fire department's ambulance, and it can get around the site now, he's made those provisions.
Oh, so that's big, that's big news, okay, all right, well, we do have hearings, we can, we could adjourn this hearing to continue, and again, I wanna adjourn it, so I don't have to republish it until either, November fifth is our next meeting, which is coming right up, or November nineteenth? Well, yeah. Would be our, we do... Is there any date you would like us to, you suggest we adjourn to, that you'd like to be on the agenda next?
We'd like to, you know...
Do you think you can get enough accomplished by the nineteenth? Or the fifth is kind of right around the corner for plans and stuff, I'm happy to put you on, if you like, but...
How do you feel about that, Jay? What works best for you, Jay?
Yeah, why don't we shoot for the fifth?
Madam Chair, only one point of order, is that the Board of Health has requested their twenty-day review of any plans. So even if plans were turned around quickly, we would not be able to grant that twenty-day review.
Well, what date would that take it to?
Depends on when they can get the plans, ma'am.
Christina, can I, point of order, since they already approved our previous plans, and they're not gonna update or change anything, per se, due to the Board of Health regulations, could we go forward with what we've ordered on already?
I would have to check with town council, only because I have a request from a board for another twenty-day review, once the plans are updated. That would be a decision of the board, or I could talk to the TA regarding that. Our bylaw is a little bit ambiguous with regards to that, which is why I asked if they wanted the twenty-day review from the updated plans as well, and I did have at least one member of the Board of Health come back that they wanted that.
Well, you, we could, we can set the date, and you can chase that down, maybe there's, that page of the plans could be done first, that involve them? I don't, I don't know a solution to that. I don't wanna step on other boards, but I do think Bill's right, is that they, I get, I think have had much of their answers, when they demanded that review, they've since had some questions answered, I think, by Roland and others, but... I think, so, in any event, nothing precludes us from adjourning it again. I would just like to, to have a date, the next date we're all back together, and if it winds up being not the definitive date, but another review date, that, so be it, if we can't nail everything down.
I'll make the motion that we continue this hearing to the fifth of November.
Okay, do you think that's helpful? Yeah, Bill, I know the Bill's here.
Bill Murray.
Bill Murray, and Mr. Curtis, and Mr. DuBois, or is it too soon?
I think that's fine.
I think that, I think that's fine.
Okay, so, do I have a second to Bill's motion?
This is John DiMellia, I'll second that.
Okay, so are there any further comments on the motion to adjourn the hearing on this matter until November fifth? Okay, so...
Madam Chair, this is a motion to continue, not a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'm sorry, continue.
And then we can have a motion to adjourn, but this is a motion to continue the public hearing, thank you.
Very important, but Bill, you wanna change your motion?
I will amend my motion.
No, he said it correctly, ma'am.
He said, I said it wrong, okay, excellent, okay.
So I just need a roll call vote, please.
On to continue the hearing till November fifth, lived all eye.
Tiger Eye.
Bill Holman's Eye.
John DiMellia, Eye.
Okay, so that...
I know, ma'am, I'm sorry, I need a, I need a vote from Ms. Duck, if she's available.
Erica, are you still there?
Yes, I am, Erica Duck, Eye.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, it's all very, just a closing note, you know, it's important we all come next time, 'cause you get subsets of participants and it creates problems, so please, please, everybody, make it on the fifth. All right, is there any further business? If not, I'll hear a motion to adjourn.
No.
Someone will make the motion?
Bill Murray, you all set?
Yes, sir.
And Jason DeBois, all set?
Yes.
All right, Madam Chair, Bill Holman's, I'd make that motion to adjourn.
I second the motion, Congressman Tiger.
Okay, not debatable, lived all eye.
Tiger Eye.
Bill Holman's Eye.
John DiMellia, Eye.
Great, okay, we'll see you on the fifth, everybody.